All right, can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like to open up the meeting for the Abington Board of Selectmen. First order of business will be to elect a chairperson. I am looking for nominations for chairperson.
I'll nominate Tim Chapin for chairman of the board.
Thank you, Kevin, I'll second.
Do I hear other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Alex Hagerty, and in doing so, I'd just like to say this, that the selectmen are elected equally. We all have equal authority. The chairman, you know, simply runs the meeting and sets the agenda, so therefore, I believe the chairmanship should, everybody should have a crack at the chairmanship. I know both Tim and Kevin have been chairman. Once upon a time, I was chairman. Suzanne and I are both new back to the board, so I think it's only right that it's Alex's turn, quite frankly, and therefore, I nominate Alex Hagerty as chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Can I second the nomination?
Okay, so we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? We'll take a vote on the first nomination for Tim Chapin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
I will take a vote on the second nomination for Mr. Hagerty.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain?
Unanimous.
Okay. Mr. Hagerty, the gavel is yours.
Actually, I'm going to break a little bit of tradition tonight. I'm more, I'm comfortable with doing the capacity of chairman from the seat that I'm doing currently, right now. Like Kevin was talking about, you know, we are all are equal. I'm more than happy, I can fulfill the duties of chairman from right here in the middle, in front of everybody, so, thank you. To my fellow, before I call the hearing for, hearing of vice, vice-chair nominations, I just want to thank my fellow Board of Selectmen for putting their trust in me and giving me the privilege to serve as chairman for this upcoming year. I'm very excited and really eager to work with all of you and moving with the town forward. And again, I also want to say thank you to the Abington residents who have continued to put their trust in me, not just on the Board of Health, not just on the Board of Selectmen, but on the Board of Health. Thank you for allowing me to serve the community that I'm born and raised and love, and absolutely love, so thank you so much. As part of taking on the chairmanship role, I just want to say that I'm very eager and excited for this upcoming year. As always, I always am 100% accessible. My email is ahagerty@abingtonma.gov, and my personal cell is 781-738-0974, and I welcome any input and all input from residents. We've got some very exciting things coming down in the pike in the next year. We also have some challenges coming up in the next year, so, such as, you know, setting selectman priorities, dealing with the water treatment with the Abington Joint Water Works, talking about Union Point with Southfield Redevelopment Authority, they're making some headway on that, so we're going to be able to have some good input on this board and some productivity from us, and obviously, the ongoing, keep an open communication with the MBTA as we continue to fight for the safety measures that we should have, that Burt Street and North Ave should have. We are going to keep up the fight. I spoke to Senator Keenan's office this afternoon, they have still not heard from the MBTA from our letter, because we did see C., our state representative and state senator, but we're going to continue to push to make sure that there are no further tragedies, and MBTA does listen to us. Also, you know, the energy aggregation, that's going to be coming up before October, so that's going to be a good discussion for us, and whether or not we want to move forward with what we have or seek elsewhere. Hiring a town planner, I'm so excited to get going on that. Scott, you had talked about regionalization with Rockland, so hopefully, we could do something like that. And obviously, the discussions about the, the potential for new fire station slash DPW building. We've kicked that can down the road far too long, and it's, and we need to take the steps moving forward, and I think we're getting closer and closer. Our fire department and DPW need our help, so that is big, big things in the next coming year, so I just want to say thank you to my fellow Board of Selectmen and women, and to the Abington residents, and just to conclude before I call for the vice-chairman nominations, I just want to say that hopefully, in the coming year, I'd love to host coffee hours with residents at the Council on Aging, perhaps here at the Town Hall, at the library, just so we can have more transparency and more communication in the coming year, so, thank you. With that being said, I will open, I will open for nominations for vice-chairman of the Abington Board of Selectmen.
I'll nominate Kevin DiMazzio.
All right.
Second.
All right, there is a, a motion for Mr. Chapin, and seconded by Mr. DiMazzio. Are there any other nominations to be heard?
I'd like to nominate Kevin Donovan.
All right, is there a second? In my capacity, I will nominate, I will second the nomination for Kevin Donovan. Are there any other nominations for vice-chairman to be heard?
I'll nominate Tim Chapin for vice-chair.
I believe that's, that nomination's on the floor.
Oh, it is?
No. I nominate Kevin.
Oh, okay, my apologies, my apologies. There was a nomination on the floor for Kevin DiMazzio. Is there a second?
The nomination's on the floor, it's for myself.
For Tim.
Kevin's already been seconded.
Oh, Kevin, forgive me. The nomination's for Tim.
It's your first day.
Nomination for Tim Chapin for vice-chairmanship. Is there a second?
I'd second you if I could.
Well, Tim, you can second your own if you want.
You know that.
That's fine, I'm good.
All right, so the two, the two nominations on the floor are in order, for Kevin DiMazzio for vice-chair. We will start in order of the nominations. All in favor for Kevin DiMazzio for vice-chairman? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
No.
All right, the, it is a, it is two to three, the nomination fails. The next nomination is for Kevin Donovan for vice-chairman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right, the nomination's three, three to two, the nomination for Kevin Donovan for, for vice-chair passes. Congratulations, Mr. Donovan.
Thank you.
All right, the next item of the business of reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, the chairman designation of MBTA pursuant, MBTA representative pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 161A, Section 7A. You will see in your packets that Abington's MBTA Advisory Board member, Mr. Toomey, has submitted his letter of resignation on May 1, 2023. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Bob Toomey for your service to the town of Abington in this capacity. Thank you. Before, so, the chairman, the chairman can designate the MBTA representative. I want to hear some input from my fellow Board of Selectmen members as to where do you believe?
Did anyone make any contact with Mr. Toomey, or is this, anything going on? Is he all right, or it just kind of seems like it was abrupt out of nowhere, he just resigned?
Scott, is there any?
I have not talked to Mr. Toomey, I don't know why.
So this would go to a resident, or someone putting in for this board, for this committee appointment?
No.
This, this?
If I may. The statute specifically says that the advisory board of the MBTA under 161A 7A shall be the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, of every town, or the city manager, or the mayor, or what have you. The chairman may designate a, a person to serve in the chairman's stead if the, if he or she so desires. So the question becomes is that pursuant to the statute, it's automatically falls to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. If he, for his own reasons, do, does not wish to serve in that capacity, he then, he alone then can designate somebody else. So I guess the question I would have, Mr. Chairman, is that something that you would want to take on yourself?
I don't, I don't read it that way, but that's, that's lines up for interpretation. I understand you said, I said it may appoint, but my question is, Kevin, is, we have plenty of residents who want to, you know, help out, and I think it's good for having residents. I'm just wondering, is, do we have anything in the charter or bylaws about this, or is this strictly just?
Nothing in the charter than I'm aware of, on the MBTA, no.
It's spelled out in the statute, it's right here, I can give you a copy if you'd like.
No, I know, that's Master of Law saying, is there anything in the charter or the bylaws that state that?
No.
No?
No.
That would be my thing, I'm just curious, so how, how did this appointment come up before? Do we know how long he was on for?
Whole time I was here.
I just, I would, I would like to see us just like any other appointment, I understand it's the chairman's decision, but I'd like to see us put it out to the residents and give a resident a shot. I mean, we have plenty of stuff going on with the MBTA right now in town, there's plenty of people that are very active in this that would probably love to be a part of this, or be on this, you know, if it falls out to a resident. I know we all have our own voices, but that was just my thought on it, and I was curious as to what it said in the charter, I know Master General Law states that, I just don't know if we had anything further in town.
There's nothing specifically for the MBTA rep, no.
Okay. To your question, Mr. Donovan, I have no problem taking on this role, the MBTA representative, the advisory board representative. I think it's important that we, as the Board of Selectmen, with everything that's going on with the MBTA, that we do put the pressure, that it's coming from us, not some, not, not, not a specific resident, but someone from this board specifically. I am more than able and willing to do this position. This is something that I think, it's, it's long overdue.
Yeah, and Alex, I don't take that as that I'm saying you can't do it, that's not the case.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, no, I'm not saying that at all.
What I'm saying is that you have a ton of residents, so this is a thing that I'm sure residents would be trumping at the bit to put in for this. We have our own capacity to speak, and now you as the chair, you, like, we've sent the letter, you can send a letter that's signed and penned by you, you know what I mean? This just gives another resident at least a seat at the table with us, you know, working with the town. There are some people that are very.
Well, to, to date, Mr. Town Manager, we haven't heard anything back from the MBTA, have we?
The only thing that I have heard is through Senator Keenan's office, that there was acknowledgement on the fourth that they had received the letter, however, they had not indicated that they had any time to actually digest what was in it. So we know someone from the T. has it.
Well, that's, that's good to hear, that they acknowledged that they received.
Okay.
But I think it's even now more pursuant than ever that selectmen follow up.
Yes, I think the board should follow up, 100%. Just one more thing on this, is this something that can only be appointed once a year? Is it open, that can be pointed at any point in time?
Correct.
So, I mean, it's always open, right? Like, if, some point throughout the year?
It's to the chairman's discretion, if, if he feels as though that halfway through the year, he wishes to designate somebody that's solely within his authority, and subsequently, whenever we reorganize the board, whoever serves in the capacity of chairman, statutorily, they're clothed with that appointment unless and until they decide themselves they want to relinquish it. So it's not a decision for the Board of Selectmen, it's a decision for the chairman pursuant to the statute.
Yes, I know, please ask for discussion, that's all. I just, I think, I think it'd be good, and I won't indirectly mention anyone, but I think there's someone that could be retiring surely, that has a very good knowledge of this, that might be a very fierce fighter for us, that's worked in the town, has knowledge, so, just my thoughts. But again, if that's awesome, if it's open at any point, it changes, and you know, you want to designate someone else.
I, I think the MBTA will listen more from an active member of the Board of Selectmen, and especially coming from the chair.
Let's hope.
So with that, with that being said, in my authority, I will designate myself as the MBTA representative pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 121A, Section 7A. The next order of business is, selectmen designate as representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board pursuant to Mass. General, Mass. General Law, Chapter 35, Section 28B. This must be a member of the Board of Selectmen. I know currently, Mr. DiMazzio, you are the representative from the Plymouth County Advisory Board, so before we take any action or did anything, I wanted to make sure we, we had discussion, a discussion with you, or what are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, it's a great advisory board, you meet a lot of people, you get input, you get to give a lot of input as well. I've served on it, I initially went a couple times, I think, with former selectmen Conley to get the feel for it, I did a year on it, I think it's a great board. I'm more than happy to stay on it, you know, more than happy someone else go on it as well.
The, the next meeting of the advisory board is June 1.
I have that down, yes.
Okay, so.
June 1, 6:00 PM, it's at the Carver Fire Station.
Okay, so if that's something, Abington, because of the way to vote, Abington's attendance is important, so if you are interested and can attend, I have no objection.
Is that something you'd be interested in continuing, Mr. DiMazzio?
Yeah, I'd continue on as I, if the board feels appropriate.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I move to appoint Kevin DiMazzio as the Abington representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board.
Can I second?
All right, Mr. Donovan makes, makes the nomination, Ms. Jessberg seconds the nomination. Any other, any other nominations to be heard? All right, the, for, Mr. DiMazzio, Kevin DiMazzio as selectman designate as representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board pursuant to the Master General Law, Chapter 35, Section 28B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Unanimous, congratulations, Kevin.
Thanks.
All righty. Next item of the agenda is appointment, selectmen representative to the Abington Affordable Housing Trust Committee. This was previously, selectman Mike Colajay had served on this, on this committee and did a fine job, so this is now a vacant seat. I will now open it up to the board for discussion. Anyone, anyone interested in the affordable, the selectman representative to the Abington Affordable Housing Trust Committee?
Believe we have a nomination from the, did somebody put in for that? Or is this the?
No, this is the selectman.
This is the selectman.
I would like to be the representative, if no one objects, something close to my heart.
All right. I move we appoint Suzanne Jessberg as the selectman representative.
All right, Mr. Donovan makes the nomination for, makes the motion for Suzanne Jessberg. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, seconded by Mr. DiMazzio. Any other nominations? All right, hearing none. All in favor for Suzanne Jessberg to be the selectman representative to the Abington Affordable Housing Trust Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous, congratulations Suzanne. Right, and last, on our reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, review and discussion of and possible vote regarding board liaison positions. You have in your packet in front of you the current Board of Selectmen liaison positions, just to go over them, just for, for us and our new members, and for the residents at home. We have, so we, we started this liaison program to keep an open line of communication between our board, the Board of Selectmen, and the other boards and community, and boards and commissions and committees in town, so we can keep a line of communication when anything ever comes up, any hot topic, or something that we, they need our support on. So first off, I have, and I did, I went by alphabetical order with us. Tim Chapin, Charter Review Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Fire Station Building Committee, and School Committee. Kevin DiMazzio, Park and Recreation Commission, myself, Beaver Brook Playground Committee, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Sewer and Water Commissions, and Zoning Board of Appeals. The available committees and boards and commissions as of right now are the Affordable Housing Trust Committee, Board of Health, Open Space Committee, Planning Board, Surplus School Building Committee, Veterans Advisory Council, and you had mentioned before, the Council on Aging.
Which was not put on.
Which, which was not, which was not on the original list that I sent, that Nancy put out for us. So let's, let's see here. For, for the sake of organization, why don't we, to, to, I'll put this to Kevin, Kevin and Tim, Kevin DiMazzio, are you interested in still doing the same, still being the liaisons to this, to the boards and committees and commissions you are now?
So my answer's no, but just to give you the backstory, I asked a little bit about this, actually, we created this, or we assign these, and I, I think, I'm more leaning, more towards, I think we should not assign liaisons this year. I think Scott has done a good job of bringing the department heads in, kind of bringing people in, reaching out, there's good communication, I think that, I think we should go without the liaison positions, that's just my opinion. I'm happy to serve as a liaison again throughout this year, but my opinion would be to, to not assign liaisons this year.
I agree with you, Kevin, there's, on four of them, I haven't, never once did they need to reach out to me. I'm sure they know where Scott is, if they need to get to our office, or Nancy. Certainly, everybody knows my email and phone number if they needed to, but I think it's just caused more trouble than has much good.
I mean, would we need to do anything if we didn't appoint? Would it be a, anything, a motion, would it be anything, or would we just not appoint?
If, if, Mr. Donovan? Yeah, if I could. I'm actually in agreement. I do not like liaison positions for several reasons. One, we have a strong town manager, form of government, and I think one of the things we have to be mindful of and keep going back to, is the charter was enacted, we changed the form of government to a strong town manager, with the idea that the selectmen set broad policy. From a human standpoint, and I, when I was town administrator in various towns, one of the things that would grate me is when a selectman would go to a department head or to another board, and those people, human nature being what it is, would end up doing what that selectman wanted, and I had to remind everybody that no action is taken unless and until the Board of Selectmen voted in its entirety. And I think liaisons have, it goes back to the, actually, the old days, and the town of Whitman used to have commissioners, and they would assign a, and they had, these were titles, the police commissioner, the fire commissioner, the highway commissioner, and it was, it became problematic. We've, fast forward, we've changed our form of government, I do not think that liaisons are something we should be employing, I think that, again, people, when you represent, when you go as a liaison, the people that are serving on the boards may misinterpret that, and I just think there's a lot of room there for problems. So with that said, I, I would be in favor of abolishing the liaison structure altogether, because they, they can come to Scott if they have a problem, he can bring it to us as a whole, we can debate it as a whole and go forward from there. That doesn't preclude individual selectmen from attending the meetings, you know, obviously, but with the understanding that if you do, and you make a, an opinion of fact, you're expressing that in your capacity as a citizen, and not as a selectman in its entirety, so having had a lot of experience with the downfalls of this, I am not, I'm in favor of abolishing, quite frankly.
All right. Any other discussion? I've personally, I've found it favorable to have these liaisons, but I do, I understand, I, I do understand your point of view, and actually, it's a very valid point, I must say, and, but I do think that us having, continuing to have communication with other boards and committees, when these liaison positions were created, I myself reached out to all the boards and commissions, and I have a robust relationship with each of them, so, but, and I, and I, and I love every single one of those commissions and boards and committees, but I, seeing that, the board is in favor of abolishing the, the board, the selectman board liaison positions, Scott, is that something that we could make a motion for right now?
Certainly.
Or would we have to, because I understand, it is also in our selectman handbook and guidelines, so if, if we abolish it tonight, then this would be something that we would have to go back to our handbook and correct.
I'm sure I can put a.
Yes.
Well, let me, let me do it right now, then. I make a motion, we abolish the position of liaisons and redact it from the selectman's handbook, as it stands now.
I'll second that. There's a second, there's a motion and a second?
I just want to add, it's not that we will not go to any of your boards and any of your meetings, if you would like us to be there. This doesn't close that door, we're always open to any of the committees.
Exactly, perfect. All right, any other, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, unanimous. Okay. Next, on to our agenda.
Excuse me, Chairman? Under the public announcements, deputy.
Oh, oh, excuse me, my apologies.
It's a bit in a different spot, but the deputy fire chief is here, and he'd like to make a couple of public announcements when you get to it.
Sure, next on our agenda, public announcements?
Thanks, Scott, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just one brief announcement for everybody. Members of our department, Matt Kroll, Katie Klein, they've been working together with the school department, and the police, and Abington Copes. This Wednesday, they're going to have a safe prom event, it's going to be a mock disaster, it's going to be out on Glenneveitch Way. You see a lot of the other communities do this, they're going to stage a car accident, they're going to have students involved, parents involved, the police involved. We just want to make people aware more than anything else, if you see a lot of activity around noon time on Glenneveitch Way, it's not real, we're in control, things are going well, and we hope it makes a difference to some of these kids. We just want to make you aware and put that out there a little bit. It's first time for us in the community, and we're very proud of our department's role in this, so if you see that type of activity out there, please don't be concerned, we're on top of it, so.
What day is this, you said?
It's going to be Wednesday, a little after lunchtime, they're, they're shooting for about 12:30 for it to happen, give or take, it'd probably take about an hour or so.
That's awesome.
Any questions?
Thank you, thank you for doing this.
Thank you to Matt and Katie, they've done a great job with this, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. All right, next up on announcements, oh, the public announcements, we go from left to right for the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Donovan, any public announcements?
I do, actually, first of all, thank you to the people of Abington for electing me, I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with my fellow selectmen for the ensuing three years. Secondly, I have had discussions with the town manager in terms of reinstituting the old Boston Post cane, back in 19, just a very brief history, in 1909, the then-Boston Post had, had canes developed and printed, which eat with each town community for all of New England, to award to the oldest resident of the community. The cane, actually, Abington has the cane in the custody of the town clerk's office, we're working with Sosho Vo-Tec to have a display case built, so we can put the original cane in it, and then we're in the process of buying replica cane to award to the oldest resident of town. So it's, it's something, it's been around since 1909, it's had its fits and starts, you know, back and forth in the town, so I'd like to get that going again, and we are, from that standpoint, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Jessberg.
I do not have any public announcements, but I would like to thank the town for coming out and voting, it was a cold and rainy day, but it was nice, and I'm honored to serve on the board, with all you gentlemen.
It's good to be joined with you.
Mr. DiMazzio?
Yeah, I have a couple. I just want to start just by saying thank you to selectman Alex Bazanson, selectman Mike Colajay for the years of service to the town. These two gentlemen served this beautiful town of ours for many years, and they served it selflessly. What most people don't see about this job itself is it takes a lot of personal time, whether it be phone calls, emails, tours, walks of places, et cetera, it's an enormous commitment. You know, you get to see us here on television for a couple hours every other week, and you get to see highlights and discussions about things going on in town. you get to see highlights and discussions about things going on in town. You know, sometimes you feel like you're, you know, not getting anything done, sometimes it could feel thankless, but you finally, when you see your vision, your idea come to fruition, that's what makes it all worthwhile. So I say this because, you know, we go through an election every single year, and you come onto the board, and, you know, Kevin has some experience already, which is tremendous help, Suzanne has experience on the town side, but, you know, it still takes a while to, to learn things and to, you know, get back into a groove here with the board. I think Kevin made, said it earlier, that it's five individually elected individuals, but functioning as one board. So it takes a lot of time. You know, we're going to disagree, we're going to have healthy discussions, you know, I don't want the residents to think that, there's arguments, no, that's a healthy discussion is good for this town, because at the end, you know, the, the best things move forward. So I say all these things because Mike and Alex both had worked on a lot of visions and ideas that they had brought to the board. They're not here now to continue those on, and it falls on this board to hopefully move them forward, and you hope they just don't stop where they are and, you know, not, never go forward again. Mike had a tremendous avenue for us with the fire department, I mean, he gave us insight to fire department, and he was their voice, and he was the voice for all town employees. Mike was just valuable. So before I go any further, I do want to congratulate Kevin Donovan and Suzanne DeJustburg for their recent victories. I'm looking forward to working with you both. You know, you're here because the residents voted for you, and they want your voice along with ours on this board. I will say, even though you have experience, you guys have big shoes to fill, because I think Mike and Alex were tremendous on this board. But anyways, that's, so congratulations to you two. You know, we need to bring the most efficient services and to make, make sure our legacy is leaving this town a solid foundation, a beautiful community, and a town second to none for our residents to live in, raise their kids, and just enjoy everything that there is to offer. That's number one. Number two, I just wanted to hit a little bit, I want to thank Mr. Cormier for his time on a couple different boards. So Mr. Cormier currently serves on the Park and Rec Commission as an appointed commissioner, it's a role that he continues to serve in. He was appointed as a sewer commissioner upon passing of Mr. Brown, and subsequently he won election to that seat in 2022 to complete that term. He served as a past water commissioner for the town of Rockland, and he was appointed as a water commissioner by a joint board here in Abington to fill Chip Muncie's seat upon his pass in 2022. He went on to become the chairman of the commission soon after that appointment. Unfortunately, this past election, there was a write, there was, I think, three different write-in campaigns by one person, so that one person won three seats, if you will, so they, he got to pick that one seat and made those other two seats basically unelectable, which puts it down to this board. Something that I think this town needs to work out, the Charter Commission really needs to take a, a look at that, in that situation, I think it's something that, you know, I hope Charter Commissioners listening tonight, they should really look at that, because, you know, it's going to fall to our, us as a board to a point. And the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to look at, I want to know how many write-ins each candidate got, because that's valuable to me. How many residents went out and voted and wrote the person in that came in second, or third, or fourth, or whatnot. So that's that. And not to be long-winded, but I am, but the last one, last weekend, an incident happened in town, someone was unfortunately bitten by a dog, this person needed to be seen at the hospital, had a pretty good wound or bite, if you want to call it. Our very own animal control officer, Joe Kenny, stepped in, he went to the hospital with this individual so they could get treated for the wounds that they received. Just to add into this, this was a Saturday night around 9:00 PM, I'm pretty sure Joe Kenny either had plans, was out, or was in bed. He went out, went to the scene, talked to this person, and went to the hospital, and he stayed the entire time. So he responded to the call selflessly, and selflessly helped out. There are no words to describe this act, other than thank you, so I just want to give a thank you to our animal control officer, Joe Kenny. That's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. DiMaggio, Mr. Chapin?
No, Kevin actually stole mine, I did want to welcome new Kevin and Suzanne to the board, and I'm glad, glad you guys are on, it's always great to have new voices, and certainly, the experience you two bring will be very helpful. I also wanted to thank Alex. We already thanked Mike at the last meeting, no need to rehash that, but I do, I, we didn't want to jinx Alex and thank him prematurely, but now that the people have spoken, I do want to thank Alex, I mean, over 30 years in this town, he's been on one board or another, so, I know he's not going, going to be too far, and I'm sure he'll be back on some board soon, so, but I just did want to say thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chapin. I do, the chair, I do have one public announcement. May has been dedicated to Mental Health Awareness Month, as an opportunity, as an opportunity for us to support people and the ones we love who struggle with mental health. Mental Health Awareness Month is aimed to raise awareness, fight stigmas surrounding mental health, and prioritize the importance of one's emotional, psychological, and social well-being. Speaking from experience, it's okay to not be okay. Don't let the fear of being judged hold you back from seeking help and treatment, your mind matters. Seeking help is a sign of strength, and finding deliberate calm is key to maintaining good mental health. Resources are available to help you today, including the National Suicide Prevention Line, 1-800-273-TALK, 8255. Veterans Crisis Line, 1-800-273-8255, Press 1. Disaster Distress Helpline, 1-800-985-5990. Substance Use and Mental Health Services Administration National Helpline, 1-800-662-Help, 4357. And you can also search treatment services at findtreatment.samhsa.gov. Help is available. And a friendly reminder, the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition will be providing a QPR training, question, persuade, and refer at Abington Town Hall here in the Carter Room on Monday, next Monday, May 15th, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. The training will help participants learn how to recognize the warning signs of suicide, and how to help someone struggling, help save a life from suicide. And lastly, I would like to welcome Kevin Donovan and Suzanne Justburg to our board, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Next, on to our agenda, we have a public hearing scheduled. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 8th, 6:35 PM in the Town Hall, Carter Room Hearing, 500 Glenneveitch Way, for applicants Daniel Silveira and Danny Els, excuse me, Danny Elsa? Danny Elsa de Silva, for a commercial, for a new commercial garage license for Precision Auto Care, Inc., 3 Highland Road, Abington.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
All right, thank you. Kevin makes the motion to open the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Suzanne, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. The public hearing is open, come on up. All right, introduce yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Silva, this is my sister, Danielle de Silva. It's been a dream, opening my own garage. I work for dealership currently for the last 10 years. We plan on, you know, opening our own and provide the best service we can.
All right. Any discussion, any, any comments or questions from the board?
If I could, please. I went up and took a look at your property, if you're looking at your business from Highland Road, are you in the last two bays?
No, in the middle.
You're in the middle, okay. The one thing I want to impress upon, once upon a time, we had a lot of problems up there with complaints with the neighbors. And I noticed you're asking to have your operation from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM on Saturday. The thing that I want for you to acknowledge to me is the fact that you recognize these are the hours.
Right.
It isn't 6:30, it isn't 7:00, it isn't 7:30, because the neighbors up there have an expectation of quiet enjoyment. So as long as you understand that, and it's recorded in the minutes, that I've asked you the question, and you have assented to the fact that you understand the hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, not beyond, I don't have an issue with it.
Perfectly understand.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. What's in there now, is it, are you taking over, or are you signing a new, or?
Uh, no.
Okay, so, so the license that was there before, is there any license in there, was there any?
There was previously.
So is this the same hours, is that old license you know?
Pretty much the same, yes.
What changed? Are you staying open later, or do you?
No, it's eight to six.
Same hours, okay. Do you plan on being open on Sundays at all, ever?
Not at all.
Parking spaces, same amount of parking spaces?
Pretty much the same thing.
Okay. And how many employees will you have, two?
Uh, currently, yeah, two.
Two, okay. There was a comment about smoke detectors, or fire extinguishers?
Yes.
Have you gotten those?
Yes, they came in yesterday, they got the sticker.
They put the tag on it, stamped it, or punched the hole in it, okay.
Yes.
And it looks like from the correspondence that we have, there's no issues with the treasurer, health department, building department, just the fire extinguishers, and that's updated. And then the fire department as well.
In the map, the picture showing you, it's obviously right here, right, this is where you're going in the middle?
Yes.
The parking spaces are just right in the front, is it, I, I'm not too familiar with how the parking's run out, but is it just all parking spaces right there?
It's right in the front, it's four right, the front is two at the entrance, one on the inside.
So there's only four parking spaces available?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, right?
Seven, eight.
Okay. So you won't be storing like extra, it's be like the eight, you won't be storing extra cars for there?
Or is that?
You won't be storing extra cars, like doubling up, there's only eight spaces?
No, no, we don't have no room.
And I know, I'll echo what Mr. Donovan said, but I'm not going to jump into, this is, you know, the lease that you have, but I know it's pretty much laid out in here, and, you know, we have had issues in that building, so there are residents around, again, it's, it's a tough street to pull out of as well. We've had, you know, the police have had to respond there as well, so we really need to make sure that there is no after-hours stuff, that you're following this lease to repeat.
I'll make sure that, you know, that's what we follow.
I know it's pretty detailed, but.
Any other discussions from the board?
There's a question.
A public comment?
Would be appropriate, Mr. Speaker.
They have to come up to the mic.
Come up to the mic, state your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, she's behind Jack Glenn. You stole my thunder, that was one of my first ones, Kevin. And there is a change to the license, because the last tenant, I think, had Saturdays, nine to one.
Okay. And we all know, what's your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ann Welch, 81 Highland Road.
Thank you.
I'm a neighbor to this new business. And I, I don't want to make any assumptions that you're not going to do what you're supposed to do. I do this every time.
We can change that if it is a concern.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I don't have a problem with it, I was just correcting them that it was a change. The other items I would like is that, to make sure that all of the work is performed inside the bays and not out in the parking area. Another item is that, to make sure that there have been issues in the past where they've had vehicles out in the parking area, loud music playing. That echoes, that comes right down the street, so I'd appreciate if you could be respectful for us of that. And then the other thing, which was a, a former tenant, they were doing test drives. So when you had your vehicles out there, and you were making sure they were running properly, they were racing them up Highland Road and down. So I just, those are the only issues, and again, I, nothing against you personally, I just, these are the issues we've had in the past, and I just wanted to make sure they were addressed. Okay, okay, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. Good luck.
Any other public comments? Come up to the podium, name and address.
This is DeAndrea, I own the property in 43 Highland, uh, 3 Highland, took 30 years to get that changed. Listen, you know, Kevin, the incident up there had nothing to do with Champion Auto, the previous auto, please make that clear to everybody on the board, nobody else likes to do the job here. But I want to tell you that Ann Welch came over to the property when Champion Auto was there, okay?
What does this have to do with Precision Auto?
Other than the fact that I issued a no trespass notice to Ann Welch for coming over and attacking.
All right, well, we're not going to let you just sit up here and come up here and insult people, what?
Tim, hold on a second.
I'm sorry, Alex, Tim, I mean to interrupt your meeting.
No, 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 no personal comments or attacks on, on individuals.
Well, it's an attack that, you know, I have to issue a no trespass notice to her every year. She's supposed to be a, a worker for the town.
That's, that's, neither here nor there.
Yep, well, okay. Let's like to say that the incident that happened up there, Kevin, well, some of the board members know, and did nothing, but that it had nothing to do with. Listen, don't get the attitude, no, no, no.
Come in here and insult everybody and be honest with yourself, they'll take it. Yeah, insult me.
Will you not know the fact of all of the issues?
This has nothing to do with it.
This is a prom out.
No, 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 we're not doing this, I'm the chairman, I'm the chairman. No personal attacks, that, they are not, they are not allowed in public comment.
Invite, invite you to sit down now, please.
Please sit down.
Yeah, please sit down. There you go. We've been dealing with him for many, many years.
Thirty years.
Yeah, yes.
And I think I've been here for most of them, too.
Mr. Donovan, just no personal comments, please. Go ahead. All right, any other discussion from the board? All right, I'll hear a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
All right, Mr. DiMaggio makes a motion to close the hearing, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Donovan, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
I move we approve the license as applied for.
All right, is there a second for the?
A second.
Just one thing on the discussion, the fire extinguishers, I know you're saying it, but are we going to have someone check them, or can make the license contingent on them being checked?
Their licenses wouldn't be. I don't have the manual receipt or anything, but.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, I just didn't know if anyone would have to go back up to the business or not, no?
They're good.
All set to go, all right. Perfect. All right, so Mr. Donovan made the motion, there was a second, Mr. DiMaggio, oh, was it, Ms. Justburg, sorry about that. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, it is unanimous, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is vote to approve minutes of April 24th, 2023, to Mr. Donovan and Ms. Justburg, you were not on the board yet, so you will have to abstain from this. I will hear any motion to approve the minutes from April 24th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 24th, 2023.
All right, thank you, Mr. DiMaggio makes the motion, is there a second? I'll make that second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
So it's.
302.
We understand, but I said.
302, okay. Next on our agenda, agenda is Fire Chief Nado's letter, rerailroad crossing safety devices at Birch Street and North Ave. I know we have Fire Chief, Chief Nado with us here tonight, if you wanted to get up to the mic and say some, speak to this.
Thank you, and welcome to the new members in the reorganization. This will also be my last time addressing your board, as your chief, I'll be retired by the end of this, and I'm not seeking, or do I plan to seek any other positions in town, but thank you for the invitation. I wish it was actually, I wish it was a more happier thing I'd be discussing, but unfortunately, it's not. And had I known I was going to read this myself, I certainly would have written this shorter, but it's not. This is dated April 27th, 2023. Originally, it was addressed to Mr. Liam Basie, the town manager, to be read to the board at this meeting, but I will do that for you. Dear Mr. Liam Basie, I would like to formally request that the town of Abington seek any and all options to require the MBTA commuter rail, or any of their subcontractors, to change the railroad crossing intersection safety devices at both the Birch Street and North Ave locations. This would include any alterations, including quad gates, to a system preventing, or at least reducing, the likelihood of future train versus vehicle collisions. During my 33-year career with the Abington Fire Department, and mainly since the commuter the commuter rail reopened around nineteen ninety-eight, I have personally responded to dozens of serious and fatal accidents within the above intersections, the most recent being last evening, which would have been April twenty-sixth, in which a nineteen-year-old male died. While I have for the most part remained in my lane professionally by not getting involved in the politics that seem to determine how these intersections are maintained, at this point I can no longer remain silent to the obvious fact that these are proving to be deadly crossings regardless of how they meet current codes. Please pass this request along to the Abington Board of Selectmen to be read into their official minutes, sincerely, John and Nuttall, Chief of Department. Um, if I can expand on this, then I'll take questions. Basically, what I'm trying to do is, I can't remain silent anymore on this, you know, this is the third one we've had just on Birch Street within the last calendar year. And I'm trying to give this board more ammunition, if you will, and I know you've done a lot of work on this. Um, you had the consultant that came in, I saw that, I read it, and really what, my understanding of that, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, I'm not looking to be an expert on this, this is just simply responding to, it was my own experience. Um, that report from that consultant really is looking to maintain that all of these crossings are up to current code. Um, I'm not sure how deep they get into actually changing things, I know you're more familiar with that, but what I got out of, a lot of signage, a lot of road paintings, things like that. My suggestion on this, and I'm only speaking as myself, I'm not speaking for the department going forward, because a few of the things I'm going to say are not going to be popular, and I'm aware of that, but, um, let me start with North Ave. That does have quad gates or a rendition of quad gates, whether they're the actual quad gates. The problem with North Ave is we have vehicles that drive on the tracks for a multitude of reasons. They just either get confused, I, I can't answer why, I don't have an answer how to stop that barring perhaps a do not enter sign on the railroad tracks, I know that sounds crazy, but we've responded to a number of incidents where the vehicles are simply driving from North Ave directly north or south on the tracks, and that usually does not have a good result. A lot of times they're able to get out, but not all the times, um, but it still causes massive damage to the train. Really focusing on the Birch Street crossing, uh, we have a problem with Birch Street, and I don't know why, but we do. That, in my opinion, without knowing all the details, really should require quad gates. I don't want to talk to any specific incidents that we've had, however, I do not know if quad gates would have prevented that or not prevented that. That question's out there, and as well as other markings, I know there's been all kinds of ideas on what to do with the Birch Street crossing, I don't have all the answers to it, I just know that if this is up to whatever the current code is for railroad crossings, it's not working. Fire and building codes changed based on experience and the reality. Uh, right now we've got a lot of changes in fire and building codes, on lithium batteries, on, um, photovoltaic, the, um.
Electric cars.
Electric cars, and in the, um.
Battery stores.
Battery stores like that, thank you. This is his realm, all right, I'm getting off track, but we changed those codes, as what does the building, based on, if something that is now happening is not working, we have to change the code to meet the reality. This is what I think we're seeing on the Birch Street crossing, it may be up to code, but it's not working. A number of reasons, they're made for the prudent driver or whatever, for whatever reason they're not working. Um, I can also tell you it's taken a toll on the personnel that work for all of the public safety departments, certainly within Abington, our mutual aid partners and like that, my department specifically, I'm not going to mention anybody because they're, we have incredible people, but they're human, and we're not going to be able to stop all of these tragedies, that's humanly impossible, I know that, however, I want to make sure that we're at least trying to make sure that every possible safety device is in place that may be prevented, so that we don't have a question that maybe if there were quad gates, maybe if the road was divided, whatever, we wouldn't be here with another tragedy again. Certainly I'm trying to save the lives of anybody, the general public, and I'm also looking at the safety and well-being of our people as well, um, which is, again, I'm trying to give you more ammunition, if you can use this anywhere, to go forward. The last thing I'm going to say, and this is not going to be popular, and I know that, and I want to say this with the full dignity and understanding and compassion for the families that have lost loved ones there, um, there's a lot of memorials set up there, and unfortunately they're not helping. If anything, I think they're drawing more people to this location. Um, I understand why they're there, I completely get it, however, they're actively congregating people ten feet away from the railroad tracks, constantly, but we're seeing, there's people there all the time, we're seeing them sometimes almost twenty-four hours a day. I understand it, but we have to have closure on this. Um, I've spoken to the town manager on this, and, um, my suggestion is if you speak to town council to see what, if any state laws you may be able to enact, if, or vote upon or whatever, that would give you more ability to remove these if you so chose to, because I think it's also fair that we're fair, how come we can have one at by sub galley, or we've got them on Brockton Ave, but we can't have them here? I think this situation is very unique, because you're literally ten feet or five feet from an active railroad that is not going to stop. Um, we see memorials on Route Three, but we don't see people congregating there, that's the difference. There's people congregating here, and we've, we've, we've dealt with it, we're trying to prevent another tragedy on this. And I know it's not a popular thing to say, and I understand it, but it has to be said. Um, and unless you have any questions, I just wanted to share this, I, I couldn't keep this in anymore, I'm trying not to get deep in this, I, I'm not an expert on railroads, on gates, on crossings, I am not a psychologist, I am not a driver ed teacher, I'm just responding to these incidents along with my, my members, and something has to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your advocacy on this, and I know it's not easy, but and to all your men and women of your department, thank you for everything that you guys are doing, especially when these tragedies do occur. Um, and I think this is something that we're going to continue to push to the MBTA and with our, our partners in the state legislature.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any comments, any comments or questions from the board?
I mean, I think regardless of any of those studies that we've done, I mean, we need to do any avenue that we can, I mean, even having our DPW director and reach out and see what we could do with the roadway, I mean, I understand signage and paintings and putting more lights, I don't know what it is we have to do, but I mean, we need to look at every single avenue, um, while we're waiting for other responses. Um, putting an island down the middle, adding more signage, again, putting, putting lights up, I don't know if we have to build a standalone crosswalk thirty feet down the road with, with lights, I don't know, but the town, we need to do something on our end. It's going to cost money, I'm sure, time, but, I mean, I think one of the biggest things is having John Stone maybe reach out and find out what we can do, um, with the road regulations and DOT, and, and hearing from, you know, Chief Nuttall, and I'm sure Police Chief and other department heads have a vast knowledge, because they're there, they're responding to every single thing there, so, you know, I thank you for the input that, you know, we only know so much and we can only hear it through you, because you guys are experiencing it, you're a man and woman are experiencing it and have to deal with that, so, you know, a debt of gratitude goes to you guys for responding, and I, you know, I feel bad for every single family that has to mourn the death, you know, of one of their loved ones there, regardless of what happens.
And this is where, and to your point, Kevin, it's like this is where we need to reiterate to the MBTA that the bare minimum is not acceptable.
Yeah.
And to, to your point, that, you know, situations change, things evolve, this, the bare minimum from the MBTA that we're getting is not workable, is not okay. Um, and then we, we, as this board and as, you know, Scott, our town manager, we are going to continue to, to advocate to the MBTA that changes need to be made.
Um, and again, I mean, I've said it at multiple meetings now, I mean, I would, I'd invite the governor right down, invite every single person, I mean, I would send a letter, I would send a letter saying, hey, we're, we're going to be here Saturday, come on down, I mean, invite any person you can. Um, you know, that, that's one, I mean, multiple things need to happen, and, whatever, I mean, it's, you know, you go on social media and you hear there's so many just comments that are all over the place, and it's, that doesn't matter, none of that matters, a life was lost, I don't care how it was lost, a life was lost, we need to do something there, and, you know, we don't need to hear the comments, we just need to work on a common goal here, and, again, like you said, Alex, that's why I appreciate the input and the knowledge that, that you guys bring and your department brings, that's, you know, stuff that we will never be able to know unless it's through you.
Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda, agenda is town manager report.
No. No, not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself.
How dare you?
All right, oh my gosh. Uh, vote to appoint board's nomination to O Colony Elder Services Board of Directors, Ann Welch. And, Ann, you're here, do you want to say anything?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Ann Welch as the.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Donovan makes a motion, DiMaggio seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Unanimous, congratulations, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, now, next item on the agenda, town manager report, the last item.
Thank you, I apologize for not having one printed out for you tonight.
Back to your old ways.
Back to my old ways.
We'll just have to pay attention.
I will, I will make sure you get copies of this for your permanent records. Powers &amp; Sullivan, our auditing firm, they've recently concluded the annual audit of the town's financial statements, this year's audit was delayed due to a large amount of staff turnover in our treasurer collector's office over the past fiscal year, um, but it is done, copies of the reports as well as the management letter and response will be available on the website. Um, I'm looking to schedule a presentation by Powers &amp; Sullivan to this board, so I'm hoping to do it in June or July, we kind of have to talk about, um, what summer schedule will be and everybody's availability, um, and then we'll make sure that we get them here when everybody's available.
If I could, before you get off that topic, um, I have, for, actually the next meeting, and there's one meeting in June, I have previous commitments that unfortunately I'm not going to be here, so I would want to be here for the audit if you don't mind.
Yep.
So I'll get together with you on what date, there's only two dates I won't be here, so.
Um, and if anybody else has any, anything coming up, just, you know, let me know, um, and I think at the next meeting with your input also, obviously if you won't be here, uh, we can set a schedule for, um, July, August, I know sometimes you try to only meet once there, it is imperative that we pick a date in August that we meet, um, because we will be calling for a special town meeting in the fall, uh, to fund the, to talk about the fire department, DPW project, and, um, zoning over at, um, at.
Union Point.
Naval Air Base, right?
Yeah.
I don't, I won't call it Union Point.
I got commitments in both months too, so.
Um, okay, so the revised letter to the MBTA did go out, went out on the twenty-eighth, and I, as we discussed earlier, um, it was just, um, an email confirmation I got through Senator Keenan's office, that they had reached out on our behalf to the MBTA to say, hey, did you get the letter, and what are you guys going to do about it? Um, the response they got basically was, yeah, we just got it. Um, and I'm not paraphrasing, that was about it, we got it, so there was no, no further, it's, which is quite disheartening when you find that, you put on the news and when I'm not on it complaining, there's other people that are having instances, um, at the red line, and then all of a sudden, everybody shows up, um, from the T to try and fix it, but, you know, we have tragedies out here that nobody's coming out for, so it is very frustrating. Uh, well, Route one thirty-nine is undergoing milling and paving work, as well as sidewalk accessibility improvement, so, um, that work has started, and it will be performed between the hours of eight PM and five AM. It's going to last for the next six to eight weeks, um, this is a, a large stretch of one thirty-nine, heading down towards Holbrook, and, um, it's all funded through MBTA and grant money, so this is a, you know, it's great that we're getting this done, but motorists are going to have to be patient and be prepared for delays and detours during the work. Uh, I received, and speaking of Joe Kenny, our wonderful ACO, I did receive a dangerous dog hearing request, somebody jinxed us, regarding an incident that happened this morning, so it, luckily, um, you know, it sounds like everybody and the dogs are all okay, but I've asked the ACO Kenny to investigate the matter and report back to me as soon as possible. Um, and in this particular instance, I think we've gone through it before, um, it can be a, um, obviously it's a bit of a challenge, but, uh, I think it would be nice if, or, if you would appoint me as the hearing officer, and I think I can probably handle this with ACO Kenny, without having it in front of the whole board.
I agree, actually, because I've been through a number of these in my previous capacities as town administrator, and it's a lot better to have it with the town manager and the ACO, and I would make a motion, we designate the town manager as the dog hearing officer.
Two years ago.
Can we do it now, or does that have to be on next meeting?
Um, I think it, you can do it now, I think it'll probably be easier, easier for me to expedite this, the other problem is, is trying to get it done in a manner with getting into a summer schedule and stuff too.
All right, well, there was a motion by Mr. Donovan, is there a second?
A second.
By Ms. Justburg? Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And.
Thank you, Scott.
The, um, motion was specific to this incident.
Just this one?
Correct. If it's not that enjoyable, I'll maybe bring it back.
You'll let us, obviously you'll let us know, because you have to come in front of the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like last time.
Um, so in co-op, in cooperation with the Mass Department of Public Health, the Abington Health Department is now a Narcan dispensing site for the town, Narcan and Narcan use training will be provided to the public at no cost, uh, for more information on this, please reach out to the Abington Public Health Nurse, Lindsey Wright. Um, and then, as a result of the recent election, as we had discussed earlier, we have two elected positions on two separate boards that are now vacant, so there's a vacant position in the Water Commission, a vacant position in the Sewer Commission, um, and as we've done in the past, um, once I have notified officially by the remaining members of the respective commissions, as is required by the charter, I will post the vacancies in accordance with the charter. Once the vacancies have been posted, anyone that is interested in filling one of the vacant positions can apply to this board, um, uh, they will have ten days after, within, you know, after it's posted to apply. And the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the boards that have the vacancies will then have a joint meeting where we will fill the positions, or where you will fill the positions. The timeline on this one was, once it's posted, you may not act sooner than fourteen days after the posting, but you must act within thirty days of the posting. At this point, um, and I've put it out there, uh, to the, uh, two different committees, that they do have to notify us, which the charter says that they will notify you of the vacancy. As soon as I have that, um, I will post it, I'll take a look at the timeline so it sort of falls in for our meetings, obviously, um, but we'll get it up there.
Just one question, would you double check the charter? I used to say that a person cannot have two elected positions, so if that is still in fact the truth, uh, I would think that you should include that in the advertisement in case there's any elected official that wants to apply.
Yeah, I believe it is still in there, but I'll double check.
Yeah, it's still in there.
Yep.
And that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you, Scott.